Should I just go to the other side?
Yeah.
Okay, we can call this meeting to order. April 14th at 6:03 PM. That's the meeting.
the laws and permits and all the other items on our agenda for the citizens of China Grove. We ask that you help us to make the right decisions for all involved. We also ask that you please watch over those that have been injured and involved in the Portwood shooting. It's a tragedy that has happened again to the same place. We ask this in your name.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, so all, um, all members of our representatives of our mayor, who address our political views, who are acting with their defense, is mayor of the county. And then approach I'm only agenda is to act upon approval of both of these of the watch six, two thousand fourteen whether it's to council me.
I have, I have my correction.
Okay.
Under the new business, item B. Item B?
B.
B as a void.
Okay.
Uh, the vote against was by Councilman McCray and trained, if not by Councilman McCray and Pruskin. And the vote in favor was by Councilmen Rips and Pruskin, not Rips and Trane. Correct?
That is correct. I have a comment. Counselor McCray made motion to change, made motion to accept minutes and what's being approved, the vote changed. Second, second, and now to Rips. All vote, all favor. All vote. Financials have been started for, uh, financial force from the city secretary.
Monday, March 5th, two thousand fourteen. In Techstar Bank, we have three accounts. The insured investor account is fourteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-three cents. The savings account is a hundred and forty-one thousand, one twenty-six and twenty-two cents. And regular checking is a hundred and four thousand, thirty-four and six cents. For a total of two ninety-seven, nine seventy-one and eighty-one cents. Uh, we have two hundred dollars in paid cash, half of it is for the office use and the other half for municipal court. Randolph Brooks, Federal Credit Union, we have a certificate of deposit, a new amount of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety-eight The other, the savings is just a deposit we have to have in there to have the account. Security Service Federal Credit Union, we have savings, a certificate of deposit for a hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-seven cents. And this one just rolled over March seventeenth. Wells Fargo National Bank, we have a public funds market account. It's a hundred and fifty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty-three cents. The total of all our funds is seven hundred, seventy-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and three cents at the end of March.
Counselor with questions? Okay, uh, may I control for Mr. Ford according to your Mr. Ford?
For March two thousand and fourteen, kept by the city was eight hundred and fifty-five dollars, seventy-two cents. Where added to the state was four hundred and thirty-seven, eighteen cents. And the total was one thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety cents.
Questions? Okay, moving on to our home to fire department, the county chief.
Good evening, how's everybody doing? All right, Chicago Fire and Rescue Monthly Report for the month of March two thousand and fourteen. Phone calls in the month of twenty-eighth of that, structured fires, we did nine, vehicle fires, two, grass fire, brush fire, one, activated firearms, three, motor vehicle collision, one, first responder calls, usually called in medical nature, we did twelve. Uh, Acadian transported one patient from the city of China Grove. Breakdown of areas, calls in the city of China Grove were three, calls in the county unincorporated area were ten, mutual aid calls, fifteen, and somebody called on the eighth, eighteen-hundred block Terry DeWey, case number one, zero eight, brush fire. On the fifteenth, seventy-six hundred block Triple Acres, case number one, one six, medical call for nausea, vomiting, and on the twenty-ninth, eighty-one hundred block Highway eighty-seven East, case number one, twenty-six, medical call for a confused party. Burn ban is in effect, will be in effect from Monday, January ninth. Uh, as always, uh, city of China Grove does have ordinances pertaining to open burning. You have to, uh, call to get a permit, but like I said, right now, we're in a burn ban. We kind of follow what Mayor County sets forth for us. We have, uh, this past week, we did get some rain, so we did allow burning, uh, last Friday. And if we do get some more substantial rain, we probably will relax a little bit, allow burning for a few days because we know people have to do that. But please, uh, always call before a campus, uh, start a fire or whatever, so that we can tell you, because we don't want to get, you know, the, you get cited or something like that. Uh, also, the county contract for transport service, uh, was up and it was, uh, put up to bid, uh, there was three companies that bid for it, Acadian, AMR, and I can't remember the other one, but, uh, Acadian wound up beating it again for another five years. So I don't know if they'll be approaching the city. And I know we don't really have a contract per se with them, but, you know, if they're all considering wanting to begin with them to find out what's going on, this is probably an opportunity time, because like I said, they just got that contract, which in a way is good because, uh, the problem, if they would've gone with someone else, there'd be that transition period, which we went through when Acadian won it from, uh, AOR, and we won't go through that transition now because, uh, we're up and running and basically everything stays the same.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, next is citizens to be heard, the time of the citizen to proceed, town on duty to be heard. No city council discussion or action can be taken if the item found on the agenda. Mayor reserve like recognized persons, anyone speaking who would not recognize the mayor will be in violation of the, violation of the rules of the meeting, just for the meeting. I'll recognize those who sound of the right way, please, maybe for three minutes, I'll speak to you mainly, and as best we can, both first and in fact, will be allowed. All right, first one on the list, sorry, first one on the list, Mr. Glenn McCarty.
Glenn McCarty, uh, seventy-two hundred block, three minutes. I think I was.
How much will you?
All right, the proceeds are, okay, I've got my name, address, okay. Uh, due to the city not having a police force, I would like to give a report of some things that happened in our city that, uh, will show you why we really need a police force. Last month, in the seventy-two hundred block of Creven, a twenty-four-year-old male overdosed on drugs, presumably heroin, and was hospitalized but survived. Three days later, at the same address, a twenty-three-year-old female overdosed on the same drug and did not survive. On March fourteenth, DEA made a drug bust in the seventy-two hundred block of Creven. This is a regular drug bust with SWAT team, ten DEA agents, and, uh, they made a bust there and apprehended two people at first, and they sat around all day waiting for what they called a drop. And finally, they, uh, about five o'clock at evening, uh, the person they were looking at, they apprehended her to at one. So they got three people there. And, uh, the drug that they had there, uh, one is coming out Mexico, he said, uh, ICE. Now, this house has been under surveillance for a long time. In fact, it's, uh, one of our police department, uh, officer Pinion, used to watch his house very closely. He knew something was going on there, but he never could put his finger on it. Same with me, I used, I knew something was going on, but I couldn't put my finger on anything. Anyway, I talked to the DEA supervisor in charge, and they told me to keep the bust kind of quiet for a couple weeks. But I talked to her today, and she said it can be made public now, and that they did, even though it's an ongoing investigation, that I could, you know, talk about. And they did, uh, arrest two people in Houston. Now, uh, this is, uh, not only something going on in our city, my neighborhood, my street now, so I'm very concerned. So, uh, this is something I think we need to really, need to look at this and, uh, get our police force back and keep them busy there, uh, watching some of these things. Now, it, uh, been reported that, uh, there's been a lot of traffic at twenty-six hundred block of fifteen, sixteen, a lot of expensive cars and limousines and things like that going in and out. Now, uh, the large capacity, uh, growth has increased from Creven, boy, that's tearing up our streets, the streets, our streets are really getting bad over there. So, uh, that was another reason, uh, another report there. There was a report that someone was shooting in back of the bakery. There was a report of a gray Dodge pickup circling Creven, I think that might've been part of the drug business. We also had a report of a shooting range opening up in the seventy-three hundred block of Real Road. It was reported that there, the faculty, I don't know if you remember, they got business there and they, they got people there, they charged them to shoot. I can hear that shooting all the way in my house, and I live a mile away, so I'm sure that it's, uh, the neighbors around here will appreciate that. They're not only during the week, but they also on Sunday mornings, they're shooting out there. Now, this is very disturbing, unlawful, dangerous, and a misviolation of our city ordinance. So, uh, so this is something we need to really look into. And you can see, uh, this, if we, if anybody needs to do for China Grove really does. I'd also like to address another administrative mistake the council has made. On March sixth, the council appointed Martin Foster, the young star turned on the council which will expire on May of two thousand fifteen. Now, this council did not pay attention or look into it or whatever, did not have her name removed from the ballot, and now she is on the ballot running for the same position that she has. Now, I'm very confused over this. Now, how, how many positions do we have on the ballot? I got a sheet for the secretary that shows three positions. But I understand that there's only two, so which is it, three or two, and why is March still the ballot? It should only be two. According to our, our, our city law, one year we have three, next year two. Now, I don't, I've become beaten, and nobody can change that, so I don't understand what, what it is. Is there three or two? Now, this is something I don't think that can be answered with no comment. It's a point of order, and I think that if we need to look into and answer this, why and what's wrong and correct this matter. Now, I do have a question.
Glenn, all due respect, it's been a bit of a weather, no offense.
Just real quick, this is nice, a positive. I'd like to report, uh, on a deal that Wilson County newspapers offered to citizens of China Grove. Now, the, the city has recognized or appointed, uh, Wilson County News as our designated newspaper. So the Wilson County News is, uh, made an offer to the people in, uh, China Grove. You can go online or you can call them, and you get the paper in the mail, received in the mailbox on the same day that it's delivered, for six weeks. And then after you get to, after the six weeks, you want to take it for a year, it's twenty-nine dollars, for two years, it's forty-two dollars. Now, this here is, uh, a lot cheaper than if you went to the store and you paid seventy-five cents a coffee and you have to drive up there and get it, this way you get it right in your mailbox. So, uh, this deal that they're offering, they offered a sweetened deal, if you take it for two years, you can give a friend six months free. So now all you, but two years, a friend year, you have six months free. Anyway, I felt that, uh, it's a very good newspaper, and if you, if you want to get the news of the area, what's happening in our area, St. Hedley, with Armin, and China Grove, is that a paper you should take.
Thanks, Glenn. Our next speaker will be Mr. Peter Mahal.
I just have a couple of questions for Mr. McCray. I'm thinking now before, we got a letter last year because we had our election, and I want to ask you, Mr. McCray, if I, I'm, I'm understanding that both of you, the ones that put this together, is this true or false? The letter that was sent out to all the citizens of China Grove that we got last year before the election, did you and Mr. McCray decide to read it?
Ma'am, they can't respond in their public comment, this is just a period of the information.
I mean, we can't find out who wrote the letter?
You can't do it in this form.
How can you find out who wrote the letter?
I don't know. Can members request public information if any?
Where would I open the public information? Your own, the secretary.
You cannot respond to it because it's not an agenda item, it's a violation.
It has to be on the agenda here. I would let it come here, I would let it come here and put it on the agenda in order to ask.
City puts it on the agenda, then.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Peter. Our next speaker, Mr. Donald.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Office of Citizens. What I want to talk to you about tonight is, once again, the two other violations that occurred in China Grove. The two city violations in question were recognized by the city by the way of letters sent out to the two property addresses. This was back on December the ninth. The letters, of course, had no backbone whatsoever. The nuisance conditions still exist on both of the properties in the city of China Grove. On the, another violation, a resident of the Tier Muliva subdivision contacted me about the shooting, uh, Mr. McCarty, who was keeping up. He did email me the exact property address, the location is seventy-four eighty-five Real Road, and the general and all running gun force permits, and with the discharge of firearms. Now, this particular property is in violation of two of the city ordinances. They're in violation of running a business off of a residential property, and they're also in violation of our, our discharge, our gun discharge ordinance, which we have a very specific one here in the city. So I just want the council to be aware of that. In regards to the two properties I'm speaking of, this is a personal comment, uh, I would say that if this tract of land was in one of the nicer subdivisions here in China Grove, I feel quite certain that this council would have acted on it in a more efficient and very quickly. And I just want the council to know that. On another matter, this is taken from the General Law Cities Book, y'all should all have one, the responsibilities, I'd just like to cite this one sentence, keep it brief. The mayor is specifically obligated by law to actively ensure that the laws and ordinances of this municipality are carried out. This has not been done, this is not a discretionary act, this is a mandatory act that mayor does or city councilperson that took the oath of office to uphold the laws of the city. This has not been done, it's been five months now. And I'm, I'm beginning to feel that my only course of action may be, uh, for the citizens to possibly create a mandamus, a rid of mandamus for the city, which I do not want to do. But the city needs to enforce its actions. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Dennis. Okay, I have two, I have Larry Carroll on this one and Ella's father on the other.
That's the one we go through the agenda, I thought.
Yeah. That's what this one is?
Yeah. Okay, the way it's worded is very confusing, I had to reread it twice.
Larry's my, I, I, Mr. Larry Carroll.
Good evening to the council. Uh, I'm not going to take very much time, but I hope that what I have to say is taken, uh, in the way it was intended. All of you know that I'm very, very concerned about the perception that, uh, our citizens have of the council and the things that they do. Now, government should be transparent at all levels. Everything that happens should not be done behind closed doors. And I'm not speaking generative, okay, but if, if it pertains to something that you know about, I want you to take it to heart. Government should be transparent. If there's something that, that goes on that involves the citizenry, such as the police department, I think everything that happens with that police department, the citizens ought to know about, and ought to be told, it ought to be out and up front. There shouldn't be any manipulation going on, there shouldn't be any vindication is going on. It should be above all. Now, whether that's fact or perception, it doesn't matter, because perceptions in the eyes of the perceiver gives reality. Now, I don't know what went on with the police department, why it was shut down for a matter of months, at a time when the police department was most needed, but whatever the reason was, I'm hoping that it doesn't fall into those categories I mentioned earlier, as for addictiveness, manipulation, or anything like that. But you have a bunch of citizens of China Grove who are very concerned about how this council is being run, and I just want to inform you of that and hope that you take it to heart.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Okay, um, no business, Mr. Ford, you're good, I just was asked by the county to ask which of the items was to be called.
When we talk about the streets and, uh, whatever this gentleman speaks, I think it's during that time or the engineer.
Oh, I didn't know I did that. Okay, my fault. When we get there, just go. Okay. Okay, let's move on, go business. Uh, update on the status of the streets, Mr. Gentland, Chief Engineer, I believe I want to do these two together, um, update on city streets, we consider act of common determiner manner and means for all municipal free care initiated, planning a big process for such care.
Good evening, y'all. How much time do y'all want me to take with that talk for too long on this deal, or make it brief for y'all, I don't know. Three minutes is fine, I mean. Uh, but anyway, what I, what the, the deal is, is that what I've done for the city is that, you know, um, that I've called out and developed a plan for managing the street pavement infrastructure for the city of China Grove. Uh, just give you some statistics real quick. The city has nine, over nine, center line miles of, uh, streets that belong to the city. That comes to really almost one million square feet of pavement that belong to the city. The pavement condition rating that I gave for the pavement of the streets is ranges as low as forty-seven point five, all the way to a high of ninety-five point eight. And that comes to a weighted average of about seventy-three point nine. And, uh, streets are, this city are generally older, and so they didn't have any of the, so what I, here's, just to you real quick right now, I did a visual, I drove all the streets and said, and broke them up into segments, block by block by block, and then so numbered all those segments, put it all in a GIS map, and then came out here, it took me really about a day and a half to do the whole deal where I drove up and down each street, uh, both ways, assessed the ride quality of them, and, uh, took pictures and cataloged those pictures, and then I rated, and what you do is, it's a manual rating system where you look at how much cracking there is, is there rutting, uh, pushing, rattling...
Is there rutting, poaching, rattling, or demolition of the top surface, flushing, patching? And then the ride quality is rated from a zero point seven to a one point one. Zero point seven being the roughest road and one point one being a very smooth ride. And so I have a worksheet that I use. It's similar to the one we used to use when I was at City San Antonio, prior to then going to an automated system. And basically, it starts out at a hundred and then for these different levels of distress, you make deductions off of that hundred. So a hundred being a brand new, perfect street that you just opened the traffic and then you deduct based on the different kinds of pavement distress that you observe. And you arrive at that number that goes as low as twenty-two all the way up to a hundred possible scores. So the idea behind that is that the city, most other cities, and I want y'all to admit this, what we're doing here is we want to have a plan where it's kind of like, I mean, I'm sure that most people here probably remember the old frame and envelope filter commercials where the guy was like, he can pay me now or he can pay me later. That's kind of the way it works with streets. And so agencies like the FAA and FHWA and ASHTO and all these other, all these engineering and techs, I'm one of them, have done a lot of studies of pavement and how it ages and where, when it starts to degrade, what happens with it. And so if you can imagine, I got a chart here. I printed it out as big as I could on a notebook paper. But maybe if y'all can see that, what happens is over here on the far left, this is a street that's brand new. So the first few, and this is a, you know, it says time here, but realistically, this is like twenty to thirty years of life typically, depending on the amount of traffic and the condition of the road, the weather patterns and whatnot. So it starts out real good and then it degrades a little bit at first, but it stays in this fair condition for an extended period of time. But what you want to do is do a maintenance update this before it goes off a cliff here. And what we have in China Grove is we've got a lot of streets that are in this fair to intermediate, good quality condition, but we have streets that have gone off the cliff now. So the idea is you want to put money in doing preventative maintenance when it's in this area and maintain those streets and hold on to that infrastructure. Because if you let them go off the cliff, and that's what this chart, I got this from a study that recently published. This is an FAA report. And it says right here, it's showing, so y'all can see this too, it's indicating if you spend a dollar in maintenance at this point, you basically bring the street back up onto this graph here. That dollar, if you wait just a few more years, then all of a sudden it's four to five dollars you've got to spend to fix the street. So the plan is that if we want to, I want, I think the council wants to to manage the infrastructure in a way where you don't go off the cliff and we have an optimal program where we're spending the least amount of money and we're holding on to the infrastructure that we've got. And so that was the idea behind rating the streets. So each street condition rating that you get indicates what payment, what treatment application makes sense to maintain that street. In some cases, a really poorly, sporing street is going to need to be either reconstructed or have a reclamation process done. Streets that are kind of in that, right in that area where they're about to go over a cliff, they need to have a structural overlay, a asphalt overlay. And then those that are still in good condition, sealing the streets, one of the biggest enemies of it, y'all pay attention to this when you drive around because, you know, it was obvious to me when I was doing this that the streets that have good water dishes and have a good profile on them, that drain good, those are the ones that seem to last better. It's the ones that have a place where maybe a driveway is built and it doesn't have a pipe and then the water sits there to separate the pavement that we get a lot of oxygen crack. Or where maybe the ditches have soaked it up over the years and don't drain anymore or the street is so flat from the beginning of time that it never really drained. And that's true of Tera Bonita.
Thank you.
I mean, it is. And that's one of the, one of the worser streets that do that.
Thank you.
But it's not the worst. But there you go.
The worst is the circle back.
Yeah. So what I've done now is, so let me go through my notes to make sure I'm hitting all the high points. So I've done all this. So for China Grove, so what I wanted, so I think what we need to do now, I mean, because what happened is apparently there was, a contractor came in and did some kind of activity on a number of the streets. And in some cases, that's actually led to worse ride quality. You're losing the edge on your streets a lot. And some of the areas, the worst streets that are out there, they're losing. They don't have that coating anymore. And so I think that my recommendation is professional is let's try to bring those poor streets up to the point where we can maintain them. And then over the next five or six years, or however long it makes sense, budget wise, let's try to implement a program of a maintenance application where we're trying to... Let's take, let's fix up some of these bad streets, get them up to where they're acceptable and then start doing a maintenance deal where we can kind of hold on to our infrastructure. That's my professional opinion of what to do. So I don't know if I need to make further, more detailed recommendations or what some of the things exactly. I did want to present what I've done. I do have, oh, I do have a list. I didn't have a chance to get, I don't have any math yet to do, y'all. But I do have a list for the council of the street condition rating. Want me to pass that out, y'all?
One copy? Ratings, is that just one copy?
Yeah. It's just the one. And this is sorted out as from the worst to the best as far as the condition. And so just the way to read it is the second idea is to sort of consider number that I gave the streets, basically in the order that I drove them and the date I rated them, the second column. So this third column is the street that got rated and then the front and two are the two streets that designate that segment, the intersecting streets. So the, so let's look down here at like segment four. That's Tera Mesa from Tera Bonita to Dead End to the north. And that's North South Street. It's seven hundred feet long. It's the width of it's eighteen. That's four hundred square yards. And it's, the ride quality is point seven. The dead condition was fifty-seven point four. And then this column just past that is the class of street. It's either a local A, which is the minimal street, the most minimal amount of traffic, a local B, and/or a C, which is a collective. And then that was the, next last column is my guess, about how much traffic each day would probably use that rather than just get this field for the importance of each segment. And then the last column is the application that I would like to see. That if I had a perfect board, we have unlimited budget. The ones up here at the top, we could get a reclamation. And the ones in the middle, that owes an overlay. And then the bottom is the ceiling application. Now, as far as like the first round of jobs, I guess that's really the big element. We're really about to talk about that. You know, Triple Bend rated orders of all the streets. The Tera Bonita is also a pretty bad shape. So they're really almost, there's, I mean, there's statistical difference there, but it's not remarkably different as far as the scores go. The problem you have with Triple, I mean, I'm sorry, the Tera Bonita, is that that's the street that has, there's a driveway right there at the corner of, right on the corner. I can't figure the address right now. I probably wrote it down, but there's a concrete driveway that the guy put in and he didn't put a pipe and the water cools there. And so that's the issue of the pavement right there. And then as you go closer, you know, more to the east and get closer to the, I guess, is that it, fifty-sixty? Yeah. And you get closer to that, then what happens is it flattens out. That road never had a good profile to it. So the deal with those streets, that's, and the Tera Mesa is in terrible condition. It's partially failed really from, from Tera Bonita all the way to the north, both at Dead End. And, but the deal on those streets is that that there needs to be a bigger project done for those than just a reclamation because of the fact that if you don't address the water issue, anything you do there is not going to cope. It's going to go, it's going to fail on you again. So I think that that, my recommendation there is to do a little more, get some survey done, figure out how can we get the drainage to positively drain away from the asphalt. And then furthermore, over in the Triple Bend area, those streets saws already come in and redone their water lines and stuff. So they've actually outsized them and redone them. And so that takes a fair amount of time. They still have to finish that one. We talked about, and I've got a pretty good grasp of that, they're going to get it done. Now, y'all know that the reason for that is that they want, they do it with the City San Antonio too. They look at the city's maintenance program, the five-year maintenance program. And they want to try to get out there ahead of that game and fix everything because every one of the senior street they paved and then two weeks later saws out of the back of it and ended up with a lump in the dirt. So that's what we don't want to have. And so we need a little more time to get that all coordinated with saws on Tera Bonita. So you got money in the budget. I'm not a politician. I'm just, I understand there's money budget, the street maintenance. You know, really, Triple Bend is the worst street out there. You know, you know, that's like a hell of an improvement. The water line's been done. And my recommendation would be to move it that first. And then the next round would be Tera Bonita streets. We'll figure out what we need to go there. So I have a couple of questions.
Counselor, if you... Were you, in talking about what, how to keep the streets from deteriorating on the sides, were you meaning to possibly use drainage? Put in some minor ditches? Possibly take out the ends of the driveway for piping and things like that?
Yeah, and that, on Tera Bonita, that rock needs to have a pipe so that that water doesn't pool there. And then the ditches, you can't, you see, like, you put a rock on fifteen, sixteen, there'd be trees that don't want to say this in a slanderous way, but the streets that the counties maintain, they've kept us, you know, defined ditch, the water stays out of the pavement, you know, and then they, and so that's what needs to happen on Tera Bonita. We need to solve that issue as part of the deal or else it's not... You can go there and slap your asphalt on it and it's not... You know what I mean?
Is that the responsibility?
No, it was not.
Let me ask you, Lieutenant, the third street here is Triple Meadow, which is connected to Triple Bend. And this council initially took, took the first steps to pave that, those streets out there. We have proved it back a year, two years ago, year and a half ago. With the intention of coming out there, that's what we stopped everything before we went out there so as to get saws in there. We wanted to, we mentioned, I brought up the fact that there were bad veins that live in the area. Mr. Keller at the time was the one who helped us or made a suggestion and motion that we take care of that first. I remember that. And so we did. We, we held off and we did that so we could come around the saws and take care of that problem and come in and do those two streets because it is a horseshoe. We were told, and we were also told by contractors that had out there that to move a quick one costs more money to move it from one end to the other to go hitting streets back and forth. So my, my, my question to you is, did you take into consideration the, and I know we gave it to you, we knew about the, we gave you everything we had and that was the Geotech report they had on streets. Okay, the whole, that whole street they did, right?
Right, I agree with that one.
Okay.
Which is the recommend, yeah.
You do.
Yeah.
Okay. We also had a contractor come out here and discuss with us the types of asphalt, you know, or the topping we're going to have, you know, those two types. It was a big discussion that we could not, we didn't have the kind of money for black topping, I guess you call that blacktop or what's the word?
Reclamation.
Well, reclamation, blacktop is the other.
Yeah, the overlay.
Overlay. Yeah, and then there's the double, then we talked, but he came out and he talked about the double chip seal or double layer
Yeah, the two portions.
reclamation with cement and some type added. And I don't know if anybody else, I went out and looked at a couple of streets that they had. That's a good product to me. It's something that the county's using. I know that that's other, other cities and counties are using in South Texas now. I've seen what it looks like. It looks pretty good, you know, but when you dictate your bids and I mean, when you propose a program to us, I will, you know, I would think that, number one, that you look at both to see which one weighs. And I'm not sure which one lasts more. If we pay an extra, how much extra? If that's going to give us the extra bang for longevity, you know, on the streets, longer life? Or do we go with...
Well, that one is considered a structural deal. Yeah, so it does spend a lot, it costs a whole lot more than doing a chip seal. So let's back up a little bit real quick because this is important. What you said, I forgot to mention that earlier. I don't know if you all know about my background, but I was a city's pavement, the City San Antonio pavement engineer for like three years, for about three and a half years. And we man, I managed all of the city's street paving contracts. And in those contracts, we did thirty million a year, street paved, thirty million dollars worth of paved. And so we would bid that out and the contractor, what we were doing later, it's a long story, but by and large, what my point is, is that we let the contractor kind of to, within a certain parameters, schedule their work around the city as they went around. Because they would upcharge us. If we called them and said, hey, we know you're over in District Nine or whatever, but the council in District Four called and wants you to go over there and do this street because they're getting a lot of heat from the citizens and what have you, that we would get all these upcharges from the contractor to do that. So we, so it is true that you want a contractor, but it's better to focus in one area. They only can mobilize in there one time. That's a pay item to mobilize for these heavy highway type jobs. So you really don't want to have, oh, well, we're hither and thither all over the city because they're upcharging for that. And then as far as like the application for Triple Bend and Triple Meadow, the Geotech engineer that the city hired recommended to do a reclamation with a cement tree, which I, that was exactly what I was thinking from the day I looked at it. So I'm glad that we're, you know, concerned on that. Then the idea of whether you put, whether your wearing surface is going to be a chip seal or a, an overlay, what you can, what we've done as a city is you put that in as a bid item where it's an option. They can either, they bid both, you know, they bid, what's it going to cost to do an overlay? What's it going to cost to do the chip seal? And then the council can decide, all right, we want to go ahead and it doesn't, it's not that much more to go ahead and do the overlay. But then you know the real numbers, see? The thing about it is, I can give you estimates of what I think it would cost or the bid is going to be coming out. But until you put it out on the street and get bids back and open those bids and see where the pricing is, you don't really know exactly what it's going to be, you know. So my thing, all those options that you want to have, you don't want to make it insane and you don't want to have ten different options. But two or three different options, you can have other streets you include in there and say, those are addable. So here's the base concept, you want to do these streets and then bid these other ones. And if we can get the money together, we can add those into the contract before you authorize the contract. So there, you have a lot of flexibility to do that. So I don't want to answer your question.
You did. Any other questions? Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll have a cover when I'm going to go back before it, but I know. Will I sign the pageant that you signed up for?
I guess you can go put it out there.
Well, I just wanted to talk to him. I may want to ask him something. I would like to ask you if you know, well, maybe a council too, I don't know. When we were talking about some of the driveways in Tera Bonita that didn't have the correct drainage, who was responsible for that? Is that, is that part, is that part of the road? Were they going to do the road repair or is that part of the nuisance?
One of the drivers was a trial one, was, looked like a new driveway. It was a concrete driveway.
Oh, yeah, the friskies in there. The brand new driveway? That's a new driveway?
I don't know. That's a, but the deal is, is the...
Those white buildings. I think you're talking that the house between buildings.
I've got a picture, but I can...
It's a new, it has, it's the house that has new, pretty landscape in it.
I don't know, I can tell you.
Well, anyways. Anyway, but I'm just curious, who's responsible for the drainage? Because that...
Well, I have a quarter of Tera Mesa. It's all the city property and should be lost before.
Okay, so if that's on city property, then when they get ready to put the roads in, then that's part of that, it's responsibility.
And when I, just real quick, I mean, when I was a city engineer in Palos, they had everybody that did a drive, they had to get a permit to do their driveway. And quite honestly, at first, I didn't understand why it was living on these driveways. And then it struck me one day for that very reason that we could say, wait a minute, we need somebody, it's either a decent dip down so the water goes or have a pipe. Hey, do you have another question?
Well, it's, it's a comment. I think you said Triple, Triple Bend is one of the, one really bad one coming in. I think you said Triple, Triple Bend is one of the, the one really bad one coming in to that, there are a couple of these guys subdivision here. And then Triple Meadow, and you were saying about how important it is to maintain them before they get to that specific condition, meaning all that. And I just think it's kind of sad because there was a couple of years ago where that could have been taken care of between, I believe it was Bear County and the city had a contract together to have that street repaired. And, uh, some council person decided that, uh, a, maybe stop.
Is that the subject here, we're talking, uh...
I know, you're probably going to shut me up, but it's true. I know, I know, I know. Well, anyway, it's, it's sad because we would have, that street could have been in some maintenance right now.
Subject here. So, um, any other questions, counsel?
I, I did have a question. So the, the next agenda item was mandar, means prioritize, you've already done that. So...
Yeah, but now what I'm cautioning on how to do is to just start with the worst street and start trying to fix them. Let's try to get the worst ones deeply fixed, done, and then let's focus on trying to maintain that middle band with the board.
But have something to do with the recommendation that you have, or how?
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I don't know what's on your agenda, so... So you have, now that y'all are moving forward with the bidding house job, there needs to be some council action to say, let's get the package together. And we'll do, and another thing too, that I'm thinking is that you may want to get a, a proposal to do, where you, where the person to do the qualifications and the work that they're contracted to, someone else, I don't know if that's important enough.
I need to interrupt you. The agenda item actually says prioritizing and initiates the control of the process for, for their...
Okay, so my recommendation, if y'all want to agenda either, you know, an action item, would be to move forward with a, a bid package and the budget, I guess, I guess I have to set aside or some of the funds, I don't know when that...
I think it's already, it's already...
So that this will be Triple Bend, Triple Meadow, and then the two cul-de-sac would be additive alternates on that package.
It's alternates?
Yes, alternates. So if the bids come in, they're good numbers, we can have it positive, we get it done and not let it have to be done early.